Okay. Ms. Kevisher?
Nothing this evening.
Ms. Rockman?
I'd just like to thank all the parents and staff that put on a successful prom weekend, and all the work that went into the event, as well as ensuring that the kids had a safe after-prom event to attend.
Wonderful. Ms. Wheeler?
I was able to participate in a couple of the JA interviews for 4th grade, so just wanted to thank the 4th grade teams for coordinating that. It seemed like it was a lot of work to put those on, and it was a great experience.
Thank you. Thanks for the work. Ms. Kunkel?
Last week, as you guys know, was teacher appreciation, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of our teachers that we're just so grateful that we have wonderful staff here to help with their students, and also to the PTAs that plans such fun events and lunches and everything else for the teachers, so that all of us could show them how much we appreciate them.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Mr. Fleming-Smith, anything?
I have nothing.
Ms. Hyatt?
First of all, just wanted to thank, we have, our American Legion has kicked off the season of celebrating our 5th grade What the Flag Means to Me essays. So last Friday was our first two schools having their Memorial Day recognition. It's just a special time. Kids sing patriotic songs. Music teachers have worked hard. The Legion has worked hard. Special thanks to Jared Richardson, has stepped in and helped leading with that. There will be a Memorial Day recognition held at Bridgeview Elementary. More to come on that. We will celebrate at the next board meeting. We'll have the district winner, Lilly Elitch, will read her essay, and the other participants that were finalists at their building will be here to be celebrated along with their families. So that was one thing. The other thing, we are heavy amidst what I like to refer to affectionately as assessment season at the elementary. There's just a whole lot of assessing, and that's a lot of hard work for our kids, for our teachers. We ask parents as well to make sure, daily practice should be making sure kids are well-rested and well-fed, but it takes a village and just appreciate all the effort that goes into that in order for our kids to showcase what they know and what they've learned over the year. And our preliminary ICAS data looks really great, but it's not official yet, so don't have anything to share officially with you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kenyon?
I do not have anything this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Baskin?
I have several recognitions for some of our fine arts programs here at PV. The first is congratulations to our PV students who participated in the Iowa High School Music Association Large Group Festival. The full orchestra received a Division One Superior rating. The string orchestra received a Division Two Excellent rating. The PV Wind Symphony and Wind Ensemble received a Division One Superior rating. And then the Symphonic Band and Concert Band received Division Two Excellent ratings. Congratulations also to all of the Pleasant Valley musicians who took part in State Large Group Festival for choir. The results for the choir were Concert Choir, Division Two Excellent. Concert Treble Choir, Division Two Excellent. Treble Choir, Division One Superior. Bass Choir, Division One Superior. Chamber Choir, Division One Superior, with one perfect ballad. And Chamber Treble Choir, Division One Superior, with one perfect ballad as well. Then congratulations to the band students who participated in the State Solo and Ensemble Festival on Saturday, April 13th. The band received fifty-one Division One Superior ratings, forty-two Excellent Division Two ratings, and seventeen Division Three Good ratings. Also, congratulations to Aditya Satya Narayan for receiving the Best in Center Award. Quite the accomplishment. Not done quite yet. Also, congratulations to Meg Byrne, who was nominated as the Outstanding High School Director by the Iowa Coral Directors Association. The award will be presented at the state convention in July. Congratulations to her and that accomplishment. And finally, I have some recognitions for our Iowa High School Music Theater. Pleasant Valley received several awards for their performance of Disney's Beauty and the Beast. Production awards went to the students for outstanding overall technical and creative achievement. Specific student awards went for outstanding performance in a principal role to Kaylee McCaw as well. There was a special recognition for the performance in a principal role that was given to Heidi Cannon as Mrs. Potts. And then our student orchestra also received a special recognition. In addition, after the callback process of all students receiving an outstanding performance in a principal role nomination, Kaylee McCaw was selected to be part of the Triple Threat Program, which is our state qualifying event for the Jimmy Awards in New York City. So she has also been chosen to sing a portion of one of her songs from Beauty and the Beast during the Spotlight medley. Very exciting for her. That is all.
Thank you. Lots of recognition. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Ms. Damon, anything? Ms. Schurz?
Yes, there's two things with a heavy heart tonight I want to share with everyone. First of all, on April fifteenth, you may have known her as Carol Hunt. Carol Hunt was a longtime aide for us in the district for fourteen years. She was actually at Bridgeview, the junior high and the high school for all those fourteen years. She was in various buildings, but she passed away on April fifteenth, so our symphonies go out to her family. And also on Friday, this past Friday, Isla Marie Giliert passed away, junior high student. She was with us, a seventh grade student throughout the years, and then she went homeschooling, I think it was around January. She lost her courageous battle with cancer on Friday. So visitations will be on Wednesday night, and funeral services on Thursday. We will have some staff who will be attending on behalf of the district as well, but our symphonies go out to the family of Isla.
Thank you. All right. Well, moving on to the consent agenda, are there any questions regarding this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
The board of the consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Rockman, to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, approval of bills, general fund.
I move the general, I move the general fund warrants to be issued in a total amount of two hundred seventy-nine thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and nine cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Wheeler, that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nutrition Fund?
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one hundred forty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-five cents in payment of invoices presented.
What's that?
Put them on here.
Yeah, I don't see it here, but I see it on my sheet here.
Hi, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Are you taking them from the list?
Yeah, I'm taking it from, it's on our packet here. Motion, Ms. Cammerer, second by Ms. Rockman, that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Have any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Right, Elementary, Junior, High Activity Fund.
I move that Elementary, Junior, High Activity Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of eleven thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and nine cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Rockman, second by Mr. Smith, that the Elementary, Junior Activity Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? High School Activity Fund.
I move that High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in a total amount of thirty-nine thousand forty dollars and fifty-five cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Cammerer, second by Ms. Wheeler, that the High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Capital Projects.
I move that Capital Projects Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of seven hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-six cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Rockman, second by Mr. Smith, that the Capital Projects Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pebble. Or Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund.
I move the Pebble Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one million forty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kunkel, second by Mr. Cammerer, that the Pebble Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Student Construction Fund.
I move that Student Construction Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of thirteen dollars and ninety-seven cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Rockman, second by Mr. Smith, that the Student Construction Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Internal Service Fund.
I move that Internal Service Fund warrants sixty-five eighty-nine to sixty-five ninety-one, and ACH thirty-one ninety-six through thirty-two hundred be issued in the total amount of three hundred seventy-five thousand sixty dollars and ninety cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Cammerer, second by Ms. Wheeler, that the Internal Service Fund warrants sixty-five eighty-nine to sixty-five ninety-one, and ACH thirty-one ninety-six through thirty-two hundred be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Trust Fund.
I move the Trust Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of two thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-one cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Kunkel, second by Mr. Smith, that the Trust Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Moving on, we have, first item of all this is Pleasant Valley Projects Update. That's why Leland is here. So if he would like to bring us up to date on these, that would be wonderful, Leland.
Okay. First off, I was just going to start off with kind of what all takes place during the summer. It's not just the project list. We also, we also do a lot of inspections. We have inspections that take place during the year for like boilers, elevators, stuff like that. But during the summer, every fire extinguisher, every building gets inspected. Along with the fire sprinkler systems that are, if they're in any of the buildings, they get inspected. Each fire alarm system goes through a full inspection. All kitchen hoods, all get inspected. Backflow preventers, which backflow preventer is, prevents water from like the boiler system to go in your drinking water. So those all get inspected in every building. We also will shut down the pool, do a full inspection of that. And on top of that, you've got all the bus inspections. Buses get inspected twice a year by the state. So, and they can, we've moved them into the summer this year. In the past, they've been in April and May. But sometimes when they find issues, it causes problems, especially when it's in the May timeframe, because you've got so many sporting events going on, track and field. We went ahead and slid that into, into the summer now instead. And we also inspect all the school vehicles at that time. The state inspects the school vehicles along with the buses at the same time. So.
Hey, Leland, who conducts all the inspections? How's that done? Do we hire somebody for that?
It depends, yeah, we hire a lot of it. All the state inspections are actually done by state inspectors, and they go to every school district. So you're just on, you just get on their calendar and they do it. There's three guys that just go from building to building to building.
So just like the fire department do the extinguishers and sprinklers, or do we hire out?
We have to hire all that out. Yeah. And I didn't even list the fire alarm inspections, but those take place, a lot of those take place during the school year. This is just stuff that happens during the summer. Yeah. Yeah. I started putting this together, and I even told Brian this afternoon, like, oh, boy. There, just at the high school alone, you can go and bring up. This was after we destroyed the parking lot. This is on that southwest corner where the new additions can be going. And can you go back to that other one? So that was right after they took the parking lot out. And what you really can't tell from there is how much grade has actually dropped off right there. Now, if you went to the next picture again, that's all flat. So at this point, they'd brought in a hundred and thirty dump trucks, loads of fill, and it's compaction fill. And so they can compact it, and it'll support the building. They were supposed to start putting pilings in today, because, but because of all the rain and stuff being forecasted, they put it off till Wednesday. But when they start doing those, you actually might hear some complaints, because they actually vibrate the pilings down, and it'll transfer throughout the whole building, the noise will.
We could get through AP testing, that would be good.
And the staff is aware, and we've also made sure that in the evenings, when we have like a scholarship night or concerts going on, that we'll make sure they stop before they begin those.
You know, that does bring up a good point, because there was a time where the AP tests, there was an issue with regards to something, and it was really distracting. So can you make sure that when that's done, that it's done in a place where it's not going to be affected?
It actually might be done by Wednesday. I'll look into the schedule.
Right.
But it got put off.
They're actually going to, okay. They're actually going to start on Wednesdays.
You want us to make sure that they have an undistracted environment for that?
They're going to be in the ABC gym, so we're hoping they're far enough away.
Okay.
So, and the other part, just quick to be aware of, even though, this was, I still think this was a very good location for this addition, but it's for all the utilities were. The natural gas for the building was there, the water for the building was there, there's multiple sewer lines, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, fiber optics were in there. So we've, all this, if you, like, right here in this picture, the lower lot, only half of it was being used, because we actually had to take sewer lines down, down to the sewer system down there, because they had to get them out of the footprint and relocate them. Staff has been really good, the high school staff's been really good about this, because we've got them going between the two parking lots back and forth as needed. So. This is actually one of the pictures from Forest Grove. We've been in those buildings recently, just, and it's just so you're aware of how it looks now compared to how it looks when you were there. So. And this here is, we already kicked off the Bridgeview playgrounds. So that's one picture, and then there's one left. So they've really been going to town with this. And we're hoping that they'll, and this is going to come in two waves. They come through the first wave, they do all the, they remove any playground equipment that's there. They prep the site, they get it ready, then they'll go to the next site. So on the, we're hoping on the twenty-fifth, they go from here, that this site will be ready for playground equipment and the surface. Then they'll go to Pleasant View, and when Pleasant View is done, then they'll be going to Riverdale. But Riverdale, we said, you have to wait until school's out, because it's just, there's too much traffic congestion. The whole parking lot's not good for people coming in and out. But then they'll be back in probably early July. There's going to be a window where there's not going to be a whole lot going on, and they're just waiting for the playground equipment to arrive. But all three sites should be prepped and ready to go at that time now. And like you said, the playground equipment was, I think they could do that in two or three weeks.
Install.
Install.
Where's it coming from? US or outside?
It is US. Yep.
It wasn't Texas, was it?
No, it wasn't Texas. But that was a good part, yeah, it was the US, and they had some of the shortest lead times.
Construction equipment at Bridgeview.
What's that?
That the kids like seeing, you know, I know.
There's.
Those kids really get into those diggers and things.
You said the whole, all the kids in that building are just excited about it. They were excited before they even started. They'll go up to the fence and just watch them.
Yeah, I know.
She said, she said they probably could put bleachers up.
Just leave the construction equipment, just see if people can go by and move them around every few.
So, at the high school, yeah, so at the high school, we've got the southwest addition, which is what they're working on right now. But they're also tearing out the west boiler room. The west boiler room, it's kind of like the west chiller, it was just one. The west boiler room for the whole west side of the building just had one boiler. And that boiler is about thirty years old. That boiler is currently being torn out, so it's actually being torn out right now as we speak. And that's going to be replaced by three new boilers. So if you happen to lose one, you're not down. So, that's also going on this summer. In the auditorium, they're supposed to start sprinkler installations in the auditorium this summer. So that'll be interesting to see how they get up to the ceiling levels. They don't, last I knew, they weren't sure if they're going to have to put scaffolding all the way across, and just slowly go up to the ceiling level, or if they had other ideas. And the next is the whole fire alarm system at the whole high school is supposed to replace, be replaced this summer. That's wiring, that's all the, all electronics, everything's supposed to be replaced. So. And then that's where I stopped, I'm like, oh, oh. It's like, this is getting busy just at the high school. The only thing happening in the ABC gym is that that floor gets recoded. They also, we're also prepping for the next year's addition, so we're trying to get as much done this year, so we're ready when we start doing, especially that cafeteria next year. It's a very short timeframe. And the next one, the west chiller, they told us that the startup would be this week. They actually pushed it all the way till Friday. The good news is, though, we were able to find a way to get some chilled water from the east side to the west side, for like the auditorium tonight for the show. It's, my left, come over here, it was like seventy-two degrees in the auditorium, so they should be fine. And Brian said last week when we did the same thing.
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night, it was fine, too. So hopefully, we can keep that up. There's a lot going on in the auditorium.
This is the project we started back, was it November, late October, early November, we started, the special chiller.
Oh, the chiller, yes.
And it's just taken this much time. We knew it was going to take time, and then the big delay has been getting the company to come in, do the startup of it, and do the testing on it, so. Hopefully Friday, they are here.
And then I put one last one down, and this is one project that's had multiple delays, so I figured it needed to be brought on this list. It's the special education kitchen at the high school. It was just, it's very complex. It doesn't sound complex, but because it has all the special needs requirements, there's a lot of complexity to it. And it took, I think just when, just the special equipment they ordered, took like nine months to get. So it got off to a slow start, and it never did speed up, but that should be completed this summer. Not going to be done yet in June, so. Junior High, we've got the office and classroom addition. And the list, we've got all the points list items we have to take care of. Consumer Science, which is, I call it, I still call it home ec area. The, that all has to be remodeled. The art room gets remodeled. The whole front office has to get moved from there to the new section, then it gets remodeled. All three gyms get worked on. The softball field, once, we've been waiting on grading, so once they take the parking lot and extend the parking lot out, then they can grade it. Then we can finally get the softball fencing back in. Furniture delivery and assembly, if anybody wants to assemble furniture, just let me know. So, but that's, so that's being delivered already at June twelfth at the Junior High. Forest Grove, we're in pretty good shape there. We've got a pretty long list of points list items, so we've got quite a few issues to still get resolved. Their furniture delivery's not coming till July fifteenth. And then their gym floor is also getting recoded. Bridgeview, their main heating and cooling plant for the office area, right in the center of that building, that gets replaced this summer. The equipment's been here for about three months already, so we're in pretty good shape there. They've got the playground areas. Pleasant View, we're putting new carpet in about ten classrooms. Two of the rooms, what's going in rooms twenty-eight, fifty-eight?
I don't remember the room numbers right now, but one of them would be a, becomes a reading classroom, we shift that to a different location. One becomes a special education classroom, so just kind of moving some people along, and then updating the rooms with new covers and so forth.
So, and then Pleasant View also, that, it's been a nice word for me since I started, is that baseball fencing when you first pull into the left. So that, that actually could start, and they might start replacing that as early as one to two weeks from now. So. And of course, their new playground area. Riverdale, this is be the last of the three years for wallpaper removal in the hallways. If you're not familiar with this, you're smiling. You've seen it? So, the, every hallway is wallpapered. So they've had to peel all the wallpaper, and then basically skim coat and patch all the hallway walls, and then, and paint them. So, so that'll look pretty good after that. They're also adding a new seclusion room, and that's all being driven because they're helping out Forest Grove. So, and then their new playground area, and their gym floor is also getting a recode. We could add more, but that was enough.
While the fire alarm system is down at the high school, how do we sort of mitigate the possibility of fire at the high school?
I've been asking that question. Nobody's given me an answer yet.
Hire a guy to wander around till?
Might have to, actually.
At least, right?
That's exactly what we're talking about.
Stop buys or something.
Yeah.
You can't have redundant one, that's way too expensive, so.
Yeah, and they're going to take one out, so one has to go back in. And actually, they have two in there right now.
Separate, right, different parts of the building?
Tied together. But they, yeah, and that's part of the problem. Yeah, that's why they need to be put into one. So, yeah, it's, it wasn't done very well. So, any questions? I guess any questions you want to ask about anything's fine.
Just one thing I noticed this year from schools that I, I don't go in all the schools, but the schools I've been in. Some schools had, with the rain, lots of water leaking through the ceiling, I would notice, parched cans or buckets. While walking through Cody and the high school. I didn't know if there's things being done about that, to fix that, and to make sure that it's dry up there, that, you know, that it's, you don't have water. I guess sitting up there maybe collecting mold or anything along those lines.
Yeah, and that's, to be honest, that's just perpetual. I mean, there's, we've got one guy that works with the district, who basically, he probably spends a day a week just looking for leaks and putting patches on. And then if he can't find, if he, if he cannot find them, we actually call a roofing company in. A lot of times, they have trouble finding them, too, because the hole might be over here, but the water's over here. And they, yeah, and it can be, it can be tiny. But if it's in the bottom of like a puddled area, it can actually be quite a bit of water. It's a challenge. The other challenge we're running into, because we've got so much construction going on, especially the junior high right now, you've got so many contractors walking across the roof. And if there's a screw, they don't reach down and pick it up, then instead they step on it, so then it punctures the roof. So, yeah, so Forest Grove, we've had some water leaks, the junior high, we've had some. We expect to see them at the high school also. And the high school in the main hallway, if that's where you've seen the buckets where it's like.
Yeah.
Where the windows are.
Yeah.
Probably an highway going back and forth from the gym and parking lot.
Exactly, yes, yes.
It all has to do with the skylights that are there. Yeah, it's not actually a roof leak, it's a roof leak, but it's a skylight leak. And if you, if you want, I'll take you up on the roof and.
That'd be fun.
They've been, yeah, they've been working on that since the day the skylights were installed, from what I'm told. Yep, it's leaked from day one. So, but we actually have been with the, one of the window companies, we talked with them a month ago about coming out and just giving us an idea of how we can get this resolved. Do we need to replace it? Do we just need to tarp it off? But you can't tarp it off, it's dark, until we can get it fixed. I don't know how long it, it's, it's actually that skylight system right there. It's quite massive.
At least, yeah, always complicated solutions to complicated problems, but the water damage I know is not.
It's very good. Yeah, you want to get rid of that as soon as you can.
How often and when does our drinking water get tested, the drinking water throughout the district and the schools?
Well, it gets tested all the time by Iowa American Water.
Make sure that it meets all the standards for what regular water should be.
The only one that's separate from that is Cody. Cody's on a well. Cody gets tested monthly, and they get tested like biannually. And that all goes through the state. And then the wellhead, in fact, we just had our wellhead inspection, and that's good for three years. But that well is actually from, I want to say like nineteen fifty-eight. Yeah. Yeah.
That's the only one that's on the well, though, is Cody.
Yes.
Great. The junior high used to be, and then they went to city water mid-two thousands. We still have the well out there.
Yes.
We, it's it's hooked up for the irrigation system of the football field if we wanna use it. I think that's about the only time we use it, is that correct?
That's about it. So, and the well at Cody, I think it's about two hundred feet deep, it's a deep well. So.
Any other questions? Thanks for that recap of what's, it's gonna be a busy summer, it sounds like.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. There is no hard motion on that. So moving on to the new business now, we have our annual food service bid recommendations for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. And excited to hear about the different types of bids we're getting this year, including the pizza and the beverage bid.
Yes, thank you.
If you'd like to walk us through that, that would be awesome.
Well, thank you so much for having me tonight. I appreciate it. I have our bread bids. We did have two companies bid this year, which was, which was great. I was excited to have two bids. We sent bids out on April second, twenty twenty-four, and opened them on May first, twenty twenty-four. We sent bids to Panacold and Bimbo Bakeries, and both did submit bids in return. The bids, Bimbo Bakeries submitted, submitted a bid for a two-drop, once a week, delivery. And Panacold for a, for a drop delivery. And the Bimbo Bakeries bid was a little bit higher, not by much, it was four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents overall. So we did, I would like to recommend Panacold for next year. They've been doing a really good job for us for the last few years. And with it being a lower bid, and for the four production kitchens delivery, I think that'd be a really good idea to keep them as our bread vendor for next year.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Is it two drop versus, is that like the number of places they'll deliver to?
Yes, we have four, the high school, junior high, Forest Grove, and Hopewell. And I really need the bread delivery to be at all four kitchens rather than the two. Which is what Bimbo Bakeries suggested, that they they could only do the two deliveries, so it would require our delivery person to. Move bread around, and it just wouldn't be worth it, so.
Thanks.
And for milk bid, I, we did mail bid packets to Anderson Erickson and Prairie Farms on April fourth. And opened on May second, twenty twenty-four. Anderson Erickson and Prairie Farms both submitted bids. Prairie Farms was the lowest overall bid by nine thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars. I would recommend Prairie Farms be awarded the milk bid for next school year. Anderson Erickson has done a great job for us, but with it being a lower, lower overall bid, Prairie Farms, I I believe would be a a good idea for next year. For the pizza bids, it was kind of exciting that Pizza Hut did submit a bid this year. So we did get pizza bids from Little Caesar's, Pizza Hut, and Papa John's. We mailed them out on April fourth and opened them on May first, twenty twenty-four. The lowest overall bid was seven dollars and seventy-five cents per pizza, and the highest was eight fifty per pizza. And as stated in the bid request, the district can choose not to do delivery pizza at all, or we may choose more than one vendor. I recommend that we choose Little Caesar's, Papa John's, and Pizza Hut for next year's vendors. The kids like the pizza, so I think a variety is always nice. And for beverage, invitations for beverages were mailed on April second, twenty twenty-four, and opened on May third, twenty twenty-four. Bids were sent to Pepsi and Coca-Cola. Pepsi and Coca-Cola both submitted bids. The Coke bid was the lowest overall, overall bid by twelve thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. I recommend that Coca-Cola remain our beverage vendor for next school year. And then for our distributor, we've been working with the AEA purchasing since September of twenty twenty-one. And I believe that it's greatly improved our inventory and purchasing. And we just have a very good relationship with them, and I I do wanna thank you for signing the the purchasing agreement for next school year. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any speculation as to why, like, the the soda bids are, like, there's a twelve thousand dollar difference between the two?
Um. What I found with this year, I I felt like Pepsi's bid was much better than last year's, but. Their Gatorade bid was, that was, for me, that what was the big difference. I'm not sure why such a big difference, but that that's what I found to be. What the big difference was in in that bid particular this year, so. But I I thought it was a lot better than last year's bid, so.
So the only big change would be the, the milk supplier?
Yes.
And then adding Pizza Hut?
Correct.
Now, we did sign, you know, I signed the AEA purchasing agreement. Do you anticipate that changing next year with regards to what's going on with the AEA?
So, what I've, what they've told us for next year is nothing will change for sure for next year. What they are going to be doing is creating a task force. Basically, combined with just a lot of different people within the state, including. Teachers and just a lot of stakeholders. And that task force will be basically doing a study and coming up with a recommendation. On how to utilize the the purchasing group and how to, how do I wanna say? Recommend going forward with with that group. Everyone in the state really does want to continue with the purchasing group, because it is very valuable. And so, I'm really hoping that they continue, whether it is part of the AEA or becoming something separate. We'll see what happens, so for next year, for sure, it'll continue on with the AEA.
Could you explain, and I'm not sure if I understand all that correctly, but when we go to school board convention, there's always. Multiple food vendors with options to provide, you know, food service to schools. How would, how does those, do those food vendors then work with the AEA purchasing agreement? Is that how it goes?
Yes.
Everyone that's a part of this purchasing agreement receives food from the same food vendor?
Yeah, so those food vendors are all part of, they all work with. The, so, for example, Martin Brothers is our distributor that works with those vendors. If that makes, does that make sense?
Yeah, so they, they're the ones that kind of move the food from the vendors to us and the other people that are part of the purchase. Do you know what the vendor is that we use? Or is it multiple vendors?
So, our food vendor is Martin Brothers. Mm-hmm. And then our, our smallwares is Rapids Wholesale. And then our ware wash is EMS detergent.
Okay. And they're the ones that bring, so when we see the menu on the Nutrislice, they're the ones that bring that food to us that we can.
So they bring the, like, the ingredients to us, so we prepare the food.
Based off of, like, a recipe from them, I believe.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Cory?
Does this fit in the budget, other than they come out, the numbers come out compared to what your plan budget is?
Good, we're, we're, we're in good shape.
If not, I will take motions, several motions, because we have to do each one of them separately. So if somebody wants to start with the bread.
I move the board accept the bread products bid submitted by Panacold Company for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Brockman, with the board accept the bread products bid submitted by Panacold Company for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Kanwisher?
Yes.
Ms. Conkle?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wheeler?
Yes.
Ms. Blackley?
Yes.
Then the milk products?
I move the board accept the low milk products bid submitted by Prairie Farms for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Wheeler, Ms. Wheeler, second by Mr. Smith, that the board accept the low milk products bid submitted by Prairie Farms for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five school year. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Panwisher?
Yes.
Ms. Conkle?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wheeler?
Yes.
Ms. Blackley?
Yes.
Uh, who wants to do the pizza one?
I move the board accept the low pizza bid submitted by Little Caesar's, Papa John's, and Pizza Hut for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Mr. Camerich, with the board accept the low pizza bid submitted by Little Caesar's, Papa John's, and Pizza Hut for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Uh, beverage?
Ms. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Kanwisher?
Yes.
Ms. Conkle?
We need to vote.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Make the motion first.
Yeah, go ahead and make the motion first. I gotta say about the beverage. I'll take a motion. For the beverage? Did we, did you do the pizza one?
We didn't vote on pizza.
Okay, roll call vote on pizza, on the Little Caesar's, Papa John's, and Pizza Hut for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
We made it up to Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Wheeler?
Yes.
Ms. Blackley?
Yes.
I can't vote twice.
And then now I will do the beverage one.
I move the board award Coca-Cola the beverage bid for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, by Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Wheeler, with the board award Coca-Cola the beverage bid for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Kanwisher?
Yes.
Ms. Conkle?
Yes.
Ms. Wheeler?
Yes.
Ms. Blackley?
Yes.
Yes. I wanna get out the AEA purchasing agreement.
I move the board accept the recommendation that the AEA purchasing agreement be extended through the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Second.
Motion by Ms. Wheeler, second by Ms. Conkle, that the AEA purchase, that the, that the board accept the recommendation that the AEA purchasing agreement be extended through the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Kanwisher?
Yes.
Ms. Conkle?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wheeler?
Yes.
Ms. Blackley?
Yes.
Okay, now.
Just real quick, thanks to Cory for all she does.
Thank you.
This upcoming year, you may have noticed, one of our passport means, we have actually hired administrative assistant for Cory. Which will be Michelle Even, who's currently at Forest Grove. In the front office there will be her assistant here next year. Probably operating out of Forest Grove, because we're out of office space here, so we may use an extra classroom over there, or there, the space. So, but well-needed position, she's quite busy.
Thank you.
And you know, Cory's been with it only for a couple of years, I think, right? And she's been doing a great job, especially after Andrea, so great job.
Thank you so much.
Good work.
Thank you.
She's great.
Thank you.
All right, now, moving on to closed session.